My tomato plants are two feet over my head. And I don't put any horse poop in them. No, not when it's this hot. Hey Dave, when you talk to the board, do you mind going up there?
Sure.
Yeah, it's on.
Does it really have, um, I just brought, I know you have someone from, but just so that they're familiar with some of our programs.
Well, you want me to grab some for him? Oh, you wouldn't believe it. Dave, you wouldn't believe, no, tell him you're gonna read the whole thing.
But, just so, I know these guys have copies, but you know you want.
Yeah, I got six o'clock.
Six o'clock?
You ready?
Alright, do I make, uh?
He's gonna open the meeting.
I'm gonna call the village board to order. And, uh, we'll stand and do the pledge of allegiance. Uh, pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright. Yeah, I guess we'll.
I, I will nominate trustee Dylan Newman to preside over the village board meeting.
I'll explain it real quick. Uh, so Jeff Mills has a medical emergency and will not be attending tonight's meeting. So we will need a motion to appoint a chair to run the meeting.
Which I just did.
Alright.
I'll, I'll second that.
Who's, who are we, me?
Yeah, I'll second that. You're, you're already there, bro.
So we asked for any discussion?
Any discussion?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Should we, uh, deviate to?
I'll just do the roll call quick, Mr. President, just for, um, we have trustee Dylan Newman.
Here.
Trustee Jay Pecker.
Here.
Trustee Gary Finch.
Here.
Trustee Jim Hurst.
Here.
Um, note for record, um, Mr. Chairman and Mr. President, you do have a quorum of your village board. Off note for record that Brett Bartels, our DPW director is here. And Dave Adams from the town of, um, McGuanego Park and Rec is here also. And you are in full compliance with the open meetings law. No, there you go.
Uh, should we deviate to hear the sheriff's report real quick?
Sure.
Lieutenant?
Anything for us?
I have nothing for you guys. Do you have anything for us?
Just that you're doing a great job.
Thank you. I know Jeffy Hoss is off today, but, um, I know he's been doing a lot of traffic enforcement or anything for you guys, so.
I heard Riley Schmitz out here coming.
Yeah, since, he's a school resource officer up at Arrowhead, but during the summer when they don't have school, he's on regular patrol, so. He's been down here quite a bit. Get his old stomping ground.
Well, thank you, Lieutenant.
Appreciate it. Have a good night.
You too. Bye, Lieutenant.
And, uh, do you want to deviate to have Brett?
No, Brett is gonna, Brett's gonna be here. He's gonna have, uh, Dave Adams. Dave, you wanna take a chair up there from the McGuannago Rec Department, who's gonna give you, it's really not an annual report, because it hasn't been quite a year. But Dave wanted to, uh, Dave and Brett and I have needed, wanted to give the board a report on how well the rec department is running. Dave? It's on, yeah, then you can do it as you can hear me.
Um, just to bring everyone up to speed, uh, with regard to contractual obligation, we were asked to certainly provide a report prior to any sort of budgetary meetings and, uh, budget approvals coming up toward the end of. In our instance, uh, we generally approve things in October and submit them to board for their approval in November. I'm of the assumption it's roughly the same time for the village of Vernon. Uh, so we simply wanted to have more or less a, an annual review or an annual update, uh, as of August. First week, second week in August, so that everyone could make decisions as to, are things going well, are things in need of change, uh, what can we improve upon, so, uh, so that's why I'm here this evening. I did, uh, meet, I should say we, uh, our department is myself. I have an administrative assistant that is full-time in the office. And then we have, uh, part-time folks in the field dedicated just to our parks programs. And, uh, we met with our Parks and Rec Committee, uh, within the last two, three weeks and presented just what the numbers were, and I can certainly provide those. I know we, we've provided, um, more or less a tabulation with regard to, that's really weird seeing that. Um, a tabulation as to which programs, uh, folks from Vernon were taking advantage of or signing up as a Vernon resident or a non-resident for Vernon programming in the case of sports. So, uh, we have those numbers compiled. I can give a brief overview. I can supply you with that data for your review. Our problem was going into it, we, we didn't have any sort of information or numbers dating back to previous years. So we're kind of starting from scratch, even though Vernon certainly had, uh, some programming in place. So, uh, verbal feedback from coaches, parents alike, has been very, very positive, very, very supportive of what we're doing and how we're doing it. Uh, there are some growing pains, not gonna lie. We have had some folks that have tried to, um, register after deadlines and after coach meetings, which we were in agreement and maintained that agreement, that, that was part of the issue previously, is that kids were allowed into programs or folks were allowed into programs well after deadlines and, and well after coach meetings. And, uh, you know, teams of twelve suddenly became teams of twenty when there could have been two teams, and now they're trying to get playing time and experience, and they're on one team of twenty instead of two teams of ten, so, um, there's, there's been a lot of positive feedback coming our way. Uh, hopefully the level of communication realized by the public works department has been better. Uh, I think it can always be improved upon, just from, from our end, we can probably communicate when we update things a little bit, uh, clearer or, or more efficiently. But, uh, you know, one of the things where we can always seek to improve, whether it's with our own people or with other communities, so. Um, with that, I'll, I'll take any questions. I can expand upon things. I don't wanna take up a lot of time. Our answer is, things are going, things are going well. We haven't done it for a full year yet, and, um, our, our committee and our board uh, have basically approved us moving status quo without any increases or without any changes, um, subject to your review, so.
And I just wanted to tell the board, Dave, the, the coaches, the parents, the phone calls that, that I'm getting are all complimentary. Love the program, love how things are organized, love the, and I like the fact too that you're going the extra mile and doing the background checks. I think that's extreme. That was never done before. And I did feel bad for Dave, because our, our former software kept track of every, everything, but since we don't have software that tracked what, you know, we could, I feel bad. We couldn't give him any, anything. We didn't get rosters, we didn't get anything, but that's all different, right, Brett?
Yeah, I mean, him and I pretty much worked from scratch. This spring, and it's gone better than it's gone since I've been here, so. I mean, it's a lot better.
Indeed, too, as, as you get more information, when it gets closer to budget time, that's really when we would like some more statistical information.
Sure. I know that we just requested another check to get released for some of the programs that folks signed up for. Uh, we provided one after the, uh, spring session, if you will. Summer is a, a little bit lesser, because playing football and, uh, fall soccer are obviously two very big components to everything, while they don't hit until fall. So, um, the summer check, I believe, is getting cut here within the next week. But, uh, preliminary numbers for fall soccer are up from spring soccer, just Vernon alone. Um, and there was a, a full roster of fifteen on a third and fourth grade play football team, so, um, you know, certainly some, some positives going on with both, both programs there. Just from the sporting world, in addition to all the other opportunities that are outlined within the, within the activity guide, that Vernon residents now have the option to participate as residents under the resident fee, um, to everyone's benefit, really.
I was amazed to see how many people for football and how many people, how many kids go off for volleyball in your program. So that's unbelievable.
Yeah, volleyball's crazy. Volleyball's a little nuts, but.
I'd say Gary.
I was just gonna ask, has there been an influx of more people joining the program this year compared to?
We don't have any of that information.
I would say my best guess is yes, just because.
Yeah, because it's more organized, better for the kids.
Just on field prep, I'm preparing more fields than I was in the past, so.
Okay.
That, to me is telling me more fields are being used.
Yeah, that sounds good.
And the coaches like the fact that Dave's providing guidance, instructions, and information. That's important, especially if somebody's a little shy about being a coach. It's good to have that background.
We actually had a coach in the other, the other day, and he was, uh, very complimentary, which is awesome, but, uh, uh, he was happy that we provided an equipment back, and they scheduled, so that they knew when they were playing.
Yeah.
Um, and a roster, so that they could get on some, some team communication, whether it's texting or, or emailing or what have you. But that information, I guess, had been provided, but perhaps it was only provided the day before the season before, which, um, I get nervous when things aren't done three, four weeks in advance, so. Um, I think it's going well. I, I know we have seventy-four kids signed up for fall soccer already. Uh, that's obviously rolling, and there are kids out on the fields as we speak here, um, in a number of uniforms again, so you'll be seeing those numbers probably Sep- end of September, early October timeframe. Yeah, we hope to continue to grow, now that we have some access to some information and some statistical data. I'm sure there'll be some.
Yeah, they, they have a base now.
Yeah, and it's nice to know what's going on.
Like, I think only one pickup really, as far as scheduling is gone, and that was probably my, or my error. Um, but it, it's, that's only gonna get cleaned up better and better the more we work together. It was the first spring we'd organized it. I don't see a reason why it wouldn't get more efficient and even better yet.
You're doing, you're doing a great job.
A hundred jobs.
Yeah, move some fields around and stuff in the spring, but.
And I, and I like how you guys work together so that we can rent out our fields, because that additional funding helps our budget too, so, that, that's agreed.
Yeah, we're working on one right now for fall softball, for Heather Ridge, I believe.
A lot of cool stuff in there.
Yes.
Yeah, tennis and pickleball are crazy. Who would've thought? Do you guys have any more questions for them?
Nope.
Well, thank you, Dave.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you, thank you, Brett. Be in contact probably tomorrow afternoon.
Thanks again, Dave.
Yeah, thanks, Dave.
I guess we'll move on to the next agenda item, uh, the Wachshau County's request to support a roundabout on the Trump ES and Edgewood Avenue. Do you wanna explain?
Um, I just wanted to explain to the board that, um, when I was village president, the village president from McGuannago, and I went with, uh, went to go see Paul Farrell to ask him to do something. I don't know if board members have ever tried to turn on to, um, National Avenue for Edgewood. Um, and it, it's, it's unbelievable. And we're gonna get the bus company in to write some letters too, because the bus company waiting to get. So anyway, the, the county, when we talked to Paul Farrell, he had said, you know, there's no way they could do a lighted intersection. In fact, that would be much more dangerous than the roundabout. So what they're looking for, they're gonna apply for a federal grant, um, but what they want is some documentation from as many people that are supportive of this, this adventure to write a letter in support, so the county board, state and federal governments all know that, um, the village of Vernon, I know, I know it's on, it was on the village of McGuannago's agenda last night. And their president wrote a letter, because he, like I said, we've been working on that for a couple of years. And then with the new subdivision that's coming in, that's just gonna increase as the, as both villages develop. That, it's a county road, and that's what they're built for, but we just have to do something with that, that intersection. It's terrible.
Yeah, if Jeff is up to it, but maybe you wanna write a letter on our behalf and.
Yeah, that's what, if the board would authorize the administrative clerk to draft that letter and then, um, authorize Jeff to sign it, that would be terrific.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes.
I think a motion to authorize the administrative clerk to draft a letter of support for this project, for the roundabout, the county, uh, county ES and Edgewood Avenue.
I'll second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, you have a unanimous, uh, approval.
Do you want to do the, a brush pickup and then Brett's report, so he can leave?
Yeah. Do you guys have any opposition to deviating the schedule to get Brett out of here?
No, no.
Cause he, he's very ill, and he's sitting next to me. Brett, do you want to, um, do you want to do your report first?
Sure. Um, a lot of ditching's been going on, kind of all over wherever, I mean, receiving calls slash culverts were replaced last year. Just been fixing grades and ditches for the most part. Um, just ordered a pipe, started some culverts, did six catch basins in Morningstar, which we're just getting to close those up, and we plan on reopening that roadways, like we just have barricades over the catch basins, allowing the cement that we forward. See harder to drive over, which should be good by tomorrow. Um, that's primarily what we've been really doing around the village for the most part. Um, starting to get rolling on ordering filters and everything before winter, get ahead of the curve on that, um, start PMing some of the bigger trucks now. Um, other than that, uh, that's kinda where we've been going, and then starting to set up the parks, like Dave said, for some of the fall sports painting and stuff like that.
Another question on the brush pickup sheet that we got designed. It says you can, your brush piles can be eight foot long by five foot high. But I didn't say how the length in there, I mean, they could put a twelve footer, twelve feet in lengths in there, I mean, that's not realistic, but I don't know if we need to add that or just go with it the way it is.
No, we did specify, uh.
I thought it was eight feet long.
Eight feet long by five feet high, but there's nothing for the depth. Oh, I don't.
I don't remember what we said, but we did clarify that, and I do have that in a note in my office.
I can listen to the meeting.
And she had.
But you're, you're on item number E right now, right? Right, um, Gary?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's fine. We wanted to talk about that while Brett was here too, right?
Yeah, I, I agree, so. Yeah, we'll move to item E and have, uh, any discussion.
But, um, trustee Pecker, you asked for this to be put on?
Yeah, yeah, I do.
You wanna tell the board what?
Well, when I say this, I ask if we can all be civil discussing this, you know. I, as you know, work, uh, I, as you know, worked, uh, Wachshau, Village Wachshau Yard Lease on Saturday. And, uh, for the month of September, I would really like to see if we can open our yard up to let people, uh, drop their, you know, get an early start, you know. And the way I would do, I do it is, uh, with volunteers. I'm, I'm willing to do it two day, uh, two days out of the month. I have someone that's willing to watch one day and another one, you know, for the month of September, but the first priority would be, Brett, what, uh, when are you done from the lot with all your projects, for, you know, like, your storage space or whatever?
Um, it really is gonna depend on the bridge project and stuff like that this year, because I'm waiting for, I'm getting lots stolen from that project, gonna be coming in here. As it is, I might have to rent a piece of equipment to pile it high enough, um, and that's not gonna be done till September, October.
Yeah, so that might be.
I can't give you a good exact date, cause I, I'm kind of, have to go off of their schedule some, and they're bringing the millings here, otherwise we're gonna lose those millings, cause I'm half that.
Extremely, that's more important to us, the milling than people dropping off their.
Priorities, up here in terms of priority.
But, yeah, I mean, so, so that's, I don't have a hard date on that. It's, I'm more on the bridge project slash the twelve hundred feet of center drives scheduled, as far as space needed for out there.
Yes, because I know you had to have priority, but the lot was, you know, you were done with the lot in September. Then I would do.
Well, we don't, the, the bridge won't be done till November.
Yeah, running behind, right?
Yeah, they're, they're a week behind. Yeah, so I, I really.
Then we can't do it, because.
I really think the dates, and then we could listen to what people are saying. The other issue too, is somebody calls and they have an issue. I'm sure, you know, if, if Brett can accommodate them, he will, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, I have no problem trying to help people out, and I can't, it's, it comes down to grinder slash what we have scheduled right now and everything going on. And I, I really feel like we have something approved at this point, let's grow with it, and if we need to adjust in spring, then we adjust. Like, I, we can't keep changing it from month to month, meeting to meeting. I, I feel that's gonna make it harder and more confusion is gonna be caused.
My personal opinion on it is, we need to prioritize getting millings in there, just because we would spend a fortune in stone.
Oh, yeah.
Doing shouldering otherwise.
Understandable. Now let's try in the spring.
Any other discussion or questions? No?
Goodbye, Brett.
Yeah, have a good night, Brett.
Thank you.
Feel better.
Yeah.
I hope so.
Alright, where are we? Vernon's ethics ordinance for village auditor's request.
Yes, for the past several years, the, a village auditor has requested the village of Vernon adopt an ethics ordinance. So what I did is, obviously it didn't draft the ordinance, I wanted you to see the language and see if you had any issues, um, related to what's in the ethics ordinance. Um, if you feel it's appropriate, what I would do is, uh, draft it in ordinance form. Um, if, if you approve of that, then it goes, all ordinances go to the village attorney, because they are village laws. But they wouldn't go to the attorney until you, if you agree with everything that's in the ethics ordinance.
Okay. So you're looking for authorization to draft?
Yeah, you would, you would authorize the, um, administrative clerk to, to draft that ordinance for village review, village board review.
Do you have a motion for that?
I'll make the motion to draft the.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You have a unanimous approval. Alright, what do we got next on here?
Voting.
Yeah.
This, this requires board approval. Um, next year we have four elections, if, if they all come to fruition, uh, February, um, April, August, and November. November's gonna be a huge, a governor's election is pretty close to a presidential in, in Wisconsin. And with, uh, the, the current governor not running, it's probably gonna be really crazy. But I would, I would like the board to concur that we hold all those elections here at the village hall. That will be the whole, the whole newsletter and people's, um, you know, um, plans. They know that it's going to be here. I'll do as much, as much extra voting time, so that people, if they wanna vote absentee, they can come in the evenings or on Saturdays and Sundays, not just during the day when nobody can come, but, I mean, people come, but I just wanted the board to concur that all the two thousand twenty twenty-six elections be held at the village hall complex.
Do you want a motion for that?
Yep, yes, please.
Do we have a motion?
Well, I could draft a resolution, cause you have to do that by res, can you want to authorize me to draft that resolution?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You have unanimous approval.
Next one's a newsletter.
Yeah, twenty twenty-five fall newsletter.
Do you want any articles taken out, modified?
I thought it was very loud.
Well, thanks, Jay. Yeah, we put the form.
Yeah, I know.
And then.
Right.
Yeah, in fact, um, and I'll listen to the tape, and if I have to modify that form, and then Tammy will update the website and Facebook, cause it's been on there for a long time.
We have it on.
What's it?
We have it on.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's been on the website, the Facebook, but I, I'll just get the height of, uh, I thought the five feet was the height. Eight feet is more.
I'm not sure. I mean, it can be, I, I gotta.
Well, some of the piles you go around that are out there already, they're a lot bigger than eight by five.
Yeah.
But maybe it's a couple meters. I, I don't, I don't know.
The only change that I've seen right off the top of my head is, I'm gonna have you change the phone number, that's on there.
For you?
Yeah, I'll text it to you later.
Okay, that sounds good. Does anybody else need the phone number changed? I know, I know your emails are right.
I don't need any.
Any other changes or comments on this newsletter?
I thought it was very well put together, very well written.
Other than the brush pickup.
Yes, clarification, yep. So there would be a motion to instruct me to.
Send that out for printing or something like that?
Yep.
Do we have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was a little choppy. You have a unanimous vote for approval to do so. Next up, we have the, to reappoint Tom Thomasak to the finance committee for a term ending four fifteen twenty-seven. I, he's obviously been on the, uh, committee forever, um, and he does a fantastic job, so I'm in favor of that.
Is there anybody else on that committee?
I'm, I'm. I'm on the committee.
I've been on there.
Yeah.
How many? Three?
But the whole board can be on it, if they want, but you have to be there for the meetings.
Right, right. Okay. I'm just curious.
Yeah.
How you doing today then?
So, that's why him and I, we have more freedom for him, a little bit, maybe a lot more of you.
But either way, I, just so the board knows, uh, the finance committee, all they do is put the budget together and give you, um, some, you know, information in regards to where they got the numbers from.
Yeah.
But the board works, you'll have workshops after that, cause you'll have to work on the budget after it's submitted to you.
Well, let's, uh, take care of the issue at hand. Do we have a motion to reappoint Tom Thomasak to the finance committee for a term ending in four fifteen twenty-seven?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote to reappoint him. Um, appoint board members to the village finance committee and terms for each member.
So this is where you decide if you wanna serve on the committee, or if you just wanna work on it after the committee presents it. Whatever you guys wanna do, well.
Is my term up yet?
No, this would, this would, um, it, it.
I think your term matches your, the time that you're on the board, right?
So I'm still gonna be on, I think.
Yeah, I gotta see.
It matches until April.
Yeah, you guys can go ahead, and I'll, I'll see what you get, what we did last year. That sound good?
Yeah, it sounds good. Um, does anybody else wanna be on the finance committee? And I'm assuming we don't have.
Well, I haven't been put on the finance committee re-up, because I just had an election, you know.
Oh, okay.
So I might have to re-up on that, right, Karen?
Yeah, that's what I'm checking for, for now.
Sounds good.
But last year, that was, that was the worst year, not because of board members, we just hadn't, we had no information, no, no.
Certainly a transition.
Trying to think what that would have to be like. In August, we were working with that facility study stuff, so I don't know.
Well, we can always reappoint him just in case, and have it match his.
Right. Right, term.
It always goes to the fifteenth, um, the fifteenth day of April in the year that you would have to run for reelection.
Twenty-seven maybe.
So I, I need to be re-upped.
We'll just do it just in case, I think, so. Do we have a motion for that?
Right.
All right, I'll make a motion to reappoint trustee Finch to the finance committee for a term ending, uh, April fifteenth of 2027.
Do, do you mind adding, um, President Milley's because he wanted to be on the finance committee?
Oh, yeah.
And they're, they're in the same.
Do you want to do that in a separate motion or in the same motion?
I think, did you guys run again, same year?
Uh-uh.
Or Jeff just?
Or Jeff and I did.
Yeah, so then your terms would add, add the same year.
So you wanted to do Jeff then?
Put Jeff on the finance committee.
I know you wanted to be on it.
Oh, yeah. He should be on it.
Yeah, he should be on it.
But you will have a lot of work, you know, after the, after the budget's put together because.
It'll be a little cleaner, you know, doing it this time.
Oh, yes, yes.
Be a lot better than it was.
Right, right.
We were fighting it uphill, but.
Right, we have balanced financial statements from, um, 2003, 2004.
Yep.
Um, we're current on reconciliation. That makes a big difference. The only problem is, is budgeting wasn't done correctly, but we'll work through that too.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll modify my motion to include President Milley's. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimously, unanimously approved both of them.
Got it.
Next on the agenda, administrator requests to revise to, for revise to establish and monitor the village website as a .gov account.
We're getting, um, a lot of requests from the federal government, the state government. And we almost lost our website last year because it was in somebody else's, on somebody else's web on their credit card. And once you, yeah, yeah, I had to, had to go through a lot of hoops to make sure that we got that .org back so, because somebody picked it up. But once you do a .gov account, no one can ever take that away. It, it, it stays with the municipality. And right now, villageofvernon.gov is open. The nice thing, um, because I talked to our IT people, revised us all the monitoring for the $420, you can't go wrong with. You know, so that's what I would be requesting is have our website be, go from the .org to .gov.
Village Vernon, Wisconsin, or Village Vernon?
It's Village Vernon right now, no W I, just villageofvernon.gov.
That would be nice.
Right.
So we do villageofvernon.gov, I mean, our emails will.
Well, your emails are going to stay at .org because we did check into that. That's a, that's a lot more complicated, um, and we'll get some prices on that, but the urgency is the website. So we'll be approving, um, the agreement with revise and authorizing President Milley to sign the agreement for $420.
Okay.
Do we have a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimously voted out one, two. Um, all righty, discussion of obsolete computers and tablets.
Trustee Newman, do you mind if we put this on the next agenda? Because I didn't realize there's more equipment in the corner than I put on the agenda. So I, I, if you don't mind, can I re-table this to the 21st? Because I want to put the, everything that's in the corner on, because I just have the laptops and the tablets.
Fair enough.
So. Is it okay if we put it on the 21st?
Consensus, all right, everybody?
Yep.
Sorry about that.
No worries. Uh, operator bartender license for Julia Hillby.
All the, all the fees have been paid, the background checks been done. She's in full compliance with her licensing through the state, so it's ready for your approval.
She looks pretty clean.
Yes, she's a good girl.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the operator bartender license for Julia Hillby. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimously approved that as well. Uh, correspondence, announcements, and reports. We heard from Brad already. We heard from the sheriff's department already. Do we have anything? We'll start with, uh, trustee Pecca.
Well, I'd like, again, I'd like to say that if people could please make sure and eliminate all fire hazards in their houses. Because our neighbors in the village of Wash, uh, were not doing that because they had three house fires within three weeks. So I'd like to say our firefighters dumped, dumped on the vehicle from fighting all these house fires. And if people have, enjoy water sports, please be safe out on the water. That's it.
Trustee Finch?
Yeah, the newsletter will be going out and there's a statement in there about our, the wages and that we need for our fire department. Now, this has been up in the past and stuff, but there's going to be a real change in the fire department if things aren't done in the future. So please read that, pay attention. Any help, understanding or any, please get ahold of us and we'll discuss it later. Thank you.
Trustee Hurd?
All right.
I don't have anything either, other than stay cool these next few days. Karen, do you have anything?
Well, I'd like to read the stormwater report for you. It's, it's right.
Yeah, right there?
Yeah, I'll take a look at it.
I just wanted to let you, I've been waiting for this since 2020-22, um, and I'd like to put it up on the website, but it's so massive, I got to compress it and put it on. It's just that big, but, um, I, I'm happy that we have that new report. Also, um, I'm not going to go through everything, but I, in your report from me, I have the summary notes from our Cardinal Ridge subdivision meeting, the summary notes from the bridge project. And I also put in there the, um, legislative update from, uh, legal municipalities, just so you could see what's going on. That's all I have. Mr. President?
Exciting stuff. Um, the next thing we're going to move to is finances. We're going to rescind the July seventeenth, 2025 motion to approve the accounts payable in the amount of $85,609.19 and then reapprove, uh, the corrected total of $85,609.44 for the July seventeenth meeting. Uh, obviously, big number difference we're talking about here, so.
But the auditor's trying to catch us and everything, so I want to make sure.
Twenty-five cents?
I, I, I said, what if I give it 25 cents? She said, you can't. So we need a motion to rescind and a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, to rescind the approval of the accounts payable of July seventeen, 2025 in the amount of $85,609.19.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous approval of that as well. Um, now we need a motion to, do we do both in one or do we?
No, now, now you just approved the, the correct amount for, um, July seventeenth, 2020-25 in the.
Discussion.
Okay. You're jumped again.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the corrected total of $85,609.44 for July seventeen, 2025 accounts payable.
What's the second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. All right, and discussion of July seventeenth fire department invoices for 2024 claims.
Yeah.
So we got that.
That should have been, we got paid in 2020-24 and what should have happened is that money should have gone in a restricted liability account. Because we hadn't gotten the bills, uh, for that. Um, and that was not done. Trust me, if, if that happens, because a lot of times with parts on DPW trucks, fire trucks, it does take a while. And if the insurance company pays what we're going to be paying, that should stay in a restricted liability account so that when the bill comes, you have the money in the year that it came. So that'll happen in the future, but I just wanted you to see what all the claims were and when they paid and just so you know.
Thank you very much.
I felt bad because we had to cut trustee Hurd off. You can't talk about it. It's not on the agenda. I felt bad, so I just wanted, you know.
Well, it might be a similar, but I, I just wanted some kind of proof that something like this does happen and insurance is paid out. That we have something that shows that so that people don't look at, you know, it's just one less thing.
Right.
To cover our tracks and make sure we're accountable.
Very good. Accounts payable for August seventh in the amount of $46,132.96.
Well, I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion, anything you guys see for changes?
I went through them pretty good today.
Sounds good. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved unanimously. Authorize the village treasurer to pay debt obligations by ACH transfers in the amount of $16,621.25. Do you want to explain this a little?
Yes, we, um, the, the debt that the village owes, uh, we typically always pay that by ACH transactions. And in the next resolution update, we'll put that in there so the treasurer can automatically do that. But, um, we're just showing the auditor that you are authorizing the, the treasurer to make those per ACH transfers. So from our bank to their bank, that's what you're authorizing the village treasurer to do.
Sounds good. Do we have a motion to do that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Second? Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimously approved that motion as well. Manual checks.
There are none, sir?
Perfect. Onto village board minutes for September twentieth, 2023. That's going back there, huh?
Yeah, I think I have to remain absent from.
No, none of these, you have to approve, none of, none of the, I think the only person that was here at the time was Dylan. All you're doing is approving to what the minutes say. You're not, you're not testifying. You're at the meeting. I found out from the village attorney.
I was at that meeting.
I found out from the village attorney that all the minutes that were not done have to be done. So now they're listening to the, I mean, I don't have time to, I'm doing plan commission. I'm trying to catch up for the yearly Washington plan commission. But now they're, they're catching up on all the minutes for the village board meeting.
Yeah, I came on the board earlier in that 2023, so it's Dylan, Dylan and I could do it, but there's just two of us.
Yeah, you, you need the whole.
We need a Dylan board. Well, it was three of us.
Yeah, so we don't, I don't have to like abstain.
You shouldn't have to abstain. You're just approving what's.
Yep.
Presented to you.
Well, Jeff came on the same time I did, yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so it's three of us to do.
Yeah.
So next time we can do it then.
Sounds good. Uh, well, we can do it right now too.
With Jeff?
Without Jeff, we can approve these.
You don't have to have people that were sitting on the.
Twenty-three, we can.
Yeah, we can. We don't need to, they, they don't need to abstain because they weren't at the meeting. They're just approving what's written down.
And these are all budget and fin, you can see how.
Even though they weren't there, they didn't listen to the meeting. Right back looked at the minutes, made sure everything was word for word in them.
It's pretty generic.
Still, you're still doing your.
Do deal with it, yeah.
The ones that are tough is plan commissions.
Oh, yeah? Do we have to do each one individually?
If, if you wouldn't mind.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve the September twentieth, 2023 village board and finance committee minutes as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Do we have a motion for October eleventh, 2023?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
For approval as presented, gentlemen?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, do we have a motion for October eighteenth, 2023 for the village board and finance committee?
Guess it's me again.
I'll second it this time. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. July seventeenth, 2025 village board minutes, so that's.
That's correct.
I do have one thing in the, um, the top part, I don't know if this matters. Did you just forgot my name?
Oh.
Again.
How rude.
Where? In the top paragraph.
Oh.
Board of six p.m., President Milley, trustee Pecca, Finch, Newman, Karen, Wolf, village auditor, Tim Thomas.
Is that when you were back visiting, you came, uh, you were attending back, the event?
Well, I think I was here.
Oh, were you?
I think I only missed one meeting and that was.
The first one.
Yeah, that was right after the accident, right after.
So you belong in that meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, because I, I approved some stuff out of the lab. Sorry, there you go. I was there.
See, I did that purposely, Jim, to see if you were. I'm sorry.
Why don't you make the motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve the July seventeenth, uh, village board meeting minutes.
With, with you being added at the meeting.
You being added at the meeting.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. We leave. Well, we got these minutes, but they're not on the agenda, so.
Well, we're, we're, I don't see the future meetings now.
Yeah, I don't see an adjournment, so you guys are guys to stay here for two weeks.
Yeah, yeah.
No adjournments.
Well, that should be, that should be fine.
And then the, the next meeting is the plan commission meeting, which is the thirteenth, no, nine eleven, no.
Next week, isn't it?
Yeah, next week, the thirteenth, yeah, it's next plan commission and the board meeting's the twenty-first.
So next week.
What, is just plan commission?
Just plan commission.
Yep.
And we don't have any, we have, well.
No point.
And then the twenty-first is a village board meeting, and that's your two meetings for the month left.
Sounds good. I spoke, well, we can't do it because it's not on the agenda. I was going to say if we needed a chair for, for that meeting, but we'll deal with that.
Yeah.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.